We will begin this evening as we usually do with I see Joan.
Joan from Flight Six with me, right? At the Board of Selected Public Hearing on Short Term Rental Rental Ordinance, Jerry Tona, Retired Recreation Director, Presently Officer of the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. Tona and his friends and family voiced their objections to the ordinance. With Jerry Tona representing the chamber's issues, after the hearing was closed, the Board of Selected responded to the objections, trying to promote the audience and trying to satisfy concerns of Jerry Tona. I voiced my concern and were ignored. These were my comments. After reviewing the short term rental ordinance, I found some omissions that should be included. Airbnb has many contracts with renters and private residents for long term or short term rentals with agreements with respective renters and property owners. The town ordinance should define the permitting process for Airbnb renters. Will the homeowner of Airbnb rental agreements be required to apply for a town permit? Will the authorized enforcement agency of employees or designated for the town, as designated by town manager, to enforce the ordinance, have the ability to have immediate access to online data or permits from the town? The town should have a policy that no permits should be approved if the homeowner has unpaid taxes. The tax department should share a list of unpaid taxes in the building department on a regular basis. I was the only participant who voiced what not addressed after the vote to the hearing, although I expressed my concern for the Omissions admitted policy that would make the document more complete. This is another example of the inequalities of politically motivated Board of Selected. We all pay our taxes and should be treated equally by the elected Board of Selected. Equality is measured by how much access you have with the political establishment. Jerry Tona, an officer of the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce and Deputy Town Manager, Melissa Appleby, Director of Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, are members of the board. The Simsbury Chamber of Commerce has businesses from Simsbury and Ramby, where the businesses pay membership fees to the organization to promote networking, marketing, receive health benefits, and advocate for their businesses. Town Manager Marie Capodol has given permission to Deputy Town Manager Melissa Appleby to attend meetings taking time away from town businesses as this appears to be a conflict of interest. Why is Deputy Town Manager Melissa Appleby promoting Ramby businesses? Simsbury is the only town that has a town employee appointed to the Board and Directors of Chamber of Commerce. Since this is a fee based organization of businesses, the town should not subsidize the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce with taxpayer money. Tonight, the Board of Selected asked to vote on Town Manager Marie Capodol's performance and a raise of 2.35% from 165,862 to 169,760, a 3,898 increase. This increase should be tabled until the union employees receive their raises that have not been finalized for three years under a six figure salary. Recently, I received a response from the State's Attorney's Office to my claim that town did not respond to an allegation by Ed Kaczynski, IPO National Representative, and quote, "There's a stance that during the termination hearing, Sergeant Fromley, Chief Volker was untruthful in his testimony, which he provided under all the penalty of perjury," that's a quote. The State's Attorney stated they could not substantiate the claim, but stated, quote, "as you are aware, truth and veracity of a cornerstone who proved justice system," end quote. If that is the case, then anyone questioned Ed Kaczynski on his allegations. Why would Ed Kaczynski assert something that was not true? It is alleged that Chief Volker has continually redrafted many reports submitted to him by the officers to promote his narrative and favors some officers over others, leading to low morale. Many reports are sanitized with public view. There's an internal incident report that states under remarks, quote, "change for Volker from sex offense to assist citizen change back after book printing," end quote. Why are the files being manipulated? Does this show a pattern of alleged sanitizing with public documents, bordering on untruthfulness? The town should investigate these allegations. Recently, there was a federal lawsuit filed Lorenzo Miller versus Simsbury Public Schools that has had much public attention. An anonymous petition is being circulated, quote, "remove Lorenzo Miller and as a security guard at Simsbury High School," end quote. The petition alleges that Lorenzo Miller has shown inappropriate behavior towards students at Simsbury High School with comments from what appears to be these students. Lorenzo Miller continues to work as a security guard after eight years of employment. Lorenzo had been coached for the track team and now a coach at Windsor High School with a winning record, no complaints. I have posted both the federal lawsuit and the petition on Twitter at Joan Coe, people through you, and all of my comments were posted on Simsbury at Twitter at Joan Coe and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Joan. Uh, everyone else?
Thank you. My name is Eric Turner, president of Simsbury. I'm also the chairman of the Recycling Committee and original proponent for the Simsbury Swamp Shop in 2019. Under the Recycling Committee, the Swamp Shop has for 20 years been a very active and appreciative component of towns like in Simsbury, as attested to by the number of donors, adoptees, visitors, and volunteer managers who have worked very hands on and very successfully run the facility for the town without cost and for the benefit of its residents and thus advantage as stipulated in the Eno will for this property. Without advanced notice, I received word in the middle of this afternoon that a meeting was to be held less than four hours later that was to announce the inclusion of the Recycling Committee and the Swamp Shop under an undefined umbrella organization containing three other diverse town entities for the purpose of which I cannot yet appreciate. Remind, vote on vote. As a subcommittee of the Board of Selected, we have reported to the Director of Public Works for the past 20 years, and I am certain the Director has kept the Board of Selected informed of any matters and issues that involve that involve their work. The amount of bureaucracy involved has thus been sensibly reduced, allowing the Recycling Committee to devote its available time to coordinating the weekly staffing of the Swamp Shop, physically operating the facility and keeping it in a clean, workable condition despite the nature of its mission. In attendance to weekly Swamp Shop requirements during the spring, summer, and fall, the Recycling Committee has pursued the success of other projects such as our annual recycling award, Nike reuse a shoe program, our water bottle filling program, and that was caused only because of COVID, and another ongoing successful biomass project whereby useful vegetable foods are now redeployed to a farm for animal state. The Recycling Committee trusts that due consideration will be given for maintaining the reasonable Board of Selection direct mission on this committee and its currently boarding requirements in order to continue to achieve success with its Swamp Shop responsibilities and other recycling goal. My feeling is, under this proposed plan that I'm hearing about, which is on state on under item G, there actually will result in no accountability. No one is going to be responsible for anything. It's going to be just floating into the woods. I cannot tell you how unhappy I am. And not to have been given the consideration of being notified of this picture. Have any questions for me when this item comes up? We have them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Yeah, just for the record, the town may have almost a member of the chamber, the town of Simsbury is a member of the chamber, and Simsbury is a member. The Simsbury is not a not least common practice. We have found three presentations tonight. The first is a recognition of two of our outgoing board members. This has been needless to say. I almost before you the craft that's what a stranger term serve up as board. I wouldn't call it strange. I don't think any of us, when we were exported in 2019, could have imagined the two years that we would have been through as a town and as a country. And it's been, it's been very important work, but not the sort of work that we had imagined at the time. Mike, I want to share some reflections about my time with you and then turn it over to anybody else on the board that wants to share any reflections. But when I, when I was first selected, you were incredibly welcoming and gracious to me as not only the first selected, but the newest member of the board. We realized that we had something in common, which was a desire to engage more unaffiliated voters in town and formed, both formed an unaffiliated work group and actually took some steps that made it easier to get involved in local government regardless of your political affiliation. We served together on hometown hero committee. When I moved to Simsbury, I knew who you were as a local business owner. And your, your name was on my, on my trash can. But then I got to, I got to know you as a, not just a member of our board, but as a member of this community. And I'm really, really struck and very touched by the service that you give to our community in ways that most members of our community have no idea about. Whether it's the flags up along Pot Meadow or donations that you or your company have made. And then obviously all the time given this board and, you know, previous boards that you serve. And, you know, I'll say this is true, Mike, it's absolutely true about Jackie is that you, I think, one of the reasons why I've enjoyed working with you so much is because you're here for Simsbury. And, and you're here for Simsbury, you're not going to go wrong. And I've enjoyed, enjoyed working with both of you. I'm talking about Mike right now. But I wanted to open it up to any other member of the board that wants to share it.
Thanks, Eric. You know, I've known, I've known you my entire life. You know, I grew up with you in our house, in a lot of ways, obviously. Had the honor of serving with you and then under you on planning. Most folks know that, but I was the alternate. You were on planning and then you were the chair. And I think we did some good work with the subdivision regulations way back then. That was my first real pouray into government service. And following your lead and your leadership, I think, was really important. And I know it helps me and I think it's, it's helped a lot of us along the way that are leaders for this community. You know, you're, you're a guy that I can assure folks at home that haven't spent time with Mike. He's the same person for coffee or for beer or behind the scenes that you see on camera every other week. He's a genuine, kind, good person that is always willing to help. Partying politics never matter to Mike or his family. It's what can, what can this community. So I am sad to see you go from the board as, as I've always enjoyed working with you and respected you. But I know that Jean's very happy to have you around more often. I know it'll make it a little easier for your, your annual Florida trip where you don't have to call in for the budget. But Mike, I'm excited for you for, for obviously, you know, your retirement from this world. But I know that this community has, has benefited from your service for a long time now. So thank you for everything you've done. Thank you.
To, to echo, to, to piggyback on everyone's, Eric and Sean said, I, I don't, it's probably impossible and out, out of people's comprehension to consider the amount of time that you've been in this company. Far before, far before any, any, uh, any decision you made to step up and move into any sort of elected recognized position. It's in the vein of the pains that to be, to be part of this community to be given ever since. And I know that, I know, I know there's probably been times that there were some lumps, you know, it wasn't always easy to serve, but you did, you did serve and you rallied, you moved forward. And as we all do, we learn and we evolve and we grow as people. And I can say from, you know, from my time when I started, I came to you offline quite often and spoke to you because we had a, we had a relationship prior to my swing reform. And you said, you'd say, Chris, that's, that's a good idea. More often than not, you said, maybe that's not the best idea. And you might want to do it a different way about it. But I honestly appreciate it. I think you did it with, you did it with pure heart and shared conviction with the town. And I know that just from myself growing up in town, you know, my family, especially one year's now in town, and my children who are here, you know, 12 and 14, I know that they are benefiting from the efforts at some point that kind of line that you put into this town. And I greatly appreciate that. And we're gonna appreciate it.
I would just say to that Mike was my seatmate when we started on this board, which maybe were there for five years, which is very sad. And as I knew so luckily, he was there to help me figure out how to find the agenda on our little paths. And would give me some helpful tips as I started on the board. So I really appreciated that, Mike. And unfortunately, we didn't get to really be a person of this whole year. But I always enjoy talking to you and playing it out. It's always Mike and I have had a friendship and a relationship outside of Board Selecting for years. And just like Chris said, I've gone ten more times and not offline to say, hey, Mike, what do you think about this? Or are we going to do this? And so we talk quite quickly and I don't expect it to change. We could so much.
Thank you, guys. I want to collect my thoughts and say a few things at the end. But I want to thank all of you. Thank you. Of course.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I just really want to thank Mike because in my 20 years of working with the board, I think you are one of the most genuine and kind of rich people I've ever worked with. Your love for this community and again, the kindness and your heart for the people of this community is just amazing. And I really appreciate that when I first came on board, your willingness to share your knowledge with me, to spend time with me, helping me better understand the community and people who live here and history of where, you know, we may have left into certain issues. And that you truly want people to be successful. And I appreciate it, but you wanted the transition of local governments to be successful and you wanted to support myself and my staff to be successful in that change. And I really couldn't have done the work in the past four years without you and the time and everything. And this really, this was Mike and Jackie. You know, the last two years have been for me as a town a forever dream, because I think that while I've really evolved with my heart in the sense that you want what's best for the community and again, that non-hurts and appointment, that's, that's sort of our dream, right? It's a board that puts the community first and puts politics aside at the door. And that's just been an absolute dream for me. And it's just a pleasure to work with you both and to have you both part of, I think, of the special board. And it's really just been amazing for people. I just feel very close to both of them.
Board, we wanted to give you a small token of, something to remember us by.
Everyone else? I can yell to Chris so loud.
Now's the time. The back of one. Awesome. I'm gonna show it.
Yeah.
Just put it around. Yeah, there you go. Okay. Thanks a lot, guys. Thank you, guys, so much. This epitomizes Simsbury, we have the town, we have the back of one. Thank you so much. Thank you. I, uh, Mike, I hope that is the first time we met, but I recollections at some point during my, my first term. I know that you've given the community for many years of its authority prior department as a member. And shoot, oh, of course, junior women's, and I'm probably missing others. So that's what I do about becoming here. We've been incredibly collaborative and also every meeting I've been with you, you challenge me to think about things differently than I otherwise would have. That's a great thing. And that's something that I want you to continue challenging, not just this board, but everyone you work with. You make us, you make me better. Working with you on EDC, working as part of the ARCA work group is a fantastic addition. And I hope that's something that you'll continue to still be engaged with where you're willing. And I, I know that you are, you won't be with Mike or Mike wants Simsbury as a group, you're not going anywhere. You're going to be engaged. But I just want to say that if this comes better off with your engagement and your involvement and your public service is one of the things that makes Simsbury great. But are
You and I have known each other a long time. I think that, I think that it's very safe, we're good friends. Personally, I've been enjoying having class friends up here for the same reasons that Eric says, because we've been very different. Folks that know me, I do appreciate diversity of perspective, diversity of thought, how we've been to fight on machines, getting into the trenches. And that's been, I think, fun, but also important for this community to have that spirited debate, to have that passionate debate, and to have somebody like you here that is willing to stand up for what you believe in. You know, the other piece, Jackie, is, is, you know, you didn't take the easy road to get here. And you're never out. That's somebody that this community wants on a board like this or volunteer or all the other things you've done. And I think we greatly benefit from that. And you're not out. You might be down right now, but you are certainly not out. You have a bright future for whatever you choose to. The last piece is, is, you know, again, in my former role, I was supposed to recruit candidates like you and Mike. There's some others that would be crazy enough to run for this day and be up here and have people say awful things about us and make things up about us and all those other things. And I think it takes a special person to raise their hand and put their name on this ballot and put it around for six spots. And it's, it's all of you that's courageous enough to do it. But I've seen the growth of you as a leader and your confidence over the last year. And I think it's, I think it's phenomenal. I think we can see what's next.
Yeah, the, I want to say thank you for the assistance you gave me the last two, couple of years, Jackie, not only things that we have together to work on, but also behind the scenes that we had, we had a number of conversations. You know, it's one of those ones where I always thought Jackie, a lot of times I thought Jackie was calling to, in support of something I was looking at. Then she kind of starts off like you're on the same, you're on the same plane and then she kind of comes at you. I didn't expect that. But I, but I, but I appreciate that. And I think one of the things that, that this, this, this board, one of the greatest aspects and assets of thought that you brought to this board was your, your understanding and advocacy of our business community. Far, far more than we probably have currently on the board. And we're going to miss that. I hope we can replace it with that asset. It'll take some time. But for any of the business owners out here in town, you've got a great advocate, Jackie Batters. And I know she's been doing so well. Thank you for that.
So Jackie, I knew you somewhat before you got on the board. I've definitely been able to hold you up there since. You're a good kid, because I'm an old guy. But I have very much enjoyed the conversations with you. Much like Chris pointed out, I don't always know where we're going to end up. But it has been a great discussion. And I respect the fact that, that you're not just rubber stamping stuff. Well, you know, Mike wants, I think we should do that. So I'm going to go along. I don't like it wouldn't, but nonetheless, it is great to have those conversations. And it's great that we challenged that, but and it's important for this board to challenge each other because out of that come better decisions for more to be experienced. I have no doubt you're done now and you'll be back. And look forward to supporting us on sidelines. Thank you.
No, I didn't even have a Jackie Batters. And I got on the board when he joined at the same time for the community. And we didn't really too much together until the budget. Yep. And that's where we both need to come together and thought the same and a lot of challenging some of the things that were going on. And we became allies there and found that we worked really well together, although we do butt heads in the ARCA meetings sometimes because we don't understand each other, but we get together. And I just have to express, I'm very excited about her board coming in. But I'm very sorry that we won't be able to continue this working relationship here. But I'm hoping that we can continue it elsewhere, potentially at ARCA, and that we are now good friends out there. And so I'm leaving, for leaving and be staying here. We're going to continue to be pals out there.
It has been Sure, of course. Go ahead, Maria. Thank you, Jackie. I really want to thank you for the time that you put into supporting economic development, supporting our business community. Folks may not really, Jackie put in so much effort, whether it's no business outreach visits or working on work plan items, just offering feedback to veterans on giving it to the community, especially during the pandemic. It was just so valuable. I really appreciate that it was completely valuable to the community, valuable to me, and I think you were up for that. I think two of the things that Jackie brought up, you, I mean, some of our community will have a lot of other things. The land use experience you brought to the table and helping us out with the torch for mental organs. It was a really thoughtful, good public policy. We know it took us a little bit, but at the end of the day, you and Chris did a great job. And we have this, again, a great piece of this good sound policy moving forward. And similarly, the work that you did earlier on with updating the payment lines for law enforcement for salary, and it's really good. Now, a lot more public policy that makes a real impact for people we serve. So thank you for those, those efforts. And we do have some incredible quality.
It's been quite a two years and it's been almost entirely on Zoom, which was weird and, you know, very strange. And I have had a great time with Mike at our book. We definitely don't agree a lot of the times, but that's okay. We have great discussions. Eric and I have had very good discussions with you. Like you said, before I was even on board. We have always an exchange of an idea. And Mike, I always go to, you know, for conversations before meetings. Sean, like you said, we've been friends for a long time. So that will continue. Um, Chris? Chris? We were on that one committee for two years. The whole time
I thought you were saying too long. Only I can say that.
So, so thank you for your patience and we got to it. And both Maria and Melissa have worked with you separately and together on different things. Melissa, ARCA, thank you, because that's, it's a huge overwhelming task. And Maria, so many different things. And I just really appreciate it. Every time I had a question, you never acted like you were annoyed. And I had lots of questions. And then you spent, you spent a lot, you know, they were all just getting us to different points. So thank you all.
Yeah, I also have something for you. Grabbing paper is not what it takes.
Next, I got me.
There we go. Thank you very much.
Oh, gorgeous. Oh, gorgeous.
I thought it was like one of the, like a rap towel.
Beautiful, absolutely beautiful.
We were going to draw you three little light.
Or we're running, either way, thank you. Thank you, guys. Beautiful.
So we do have one, one last quick one. Mike, in the, in the longstanding tradition of having fun somehow going members, we wanted to make sure that we appropriately sent you off. And it's good that this is your voice here to validate this appointment, and I think I'm, I think I'm overstepping my charter authority, but I'm going to do it anyway. Mike, we want to, we want to grant you lifetime access to one of the most treasured facilities in this community. One that, one that you've spent a lot of time at and are integral to many of our residents at, but this is officially the keys to that kingdom. So Mike, that is the official key to the transfer station.
It's been a big time.
I didn't know if they could get out of the archives and found it, but that is, that was forged, I think, in, what, 1687?
I guess something my dad did.
It's the original transportation thing, so just present that.
Thank you guys so much.
That was longer than five minutes.
So I have, what is this, about two weeks? And so I turned over the piece to Wendy's first time. And I wanted to do a proclamation, if I, you know, if I'm known for anything in this community. My hope is that I would be known for promoting a kinder or welcoming. So I wanted to declare the week of November 20th. The last week of our term as Kindness Week in Simsberry. What I wanted to do is encourage residents to email me any stories they have of either kind acts that they witnessed. Perhaps they've killed a child or something that was done kind with them, and then I want to feature those on my Facebook page and the final. So the proclamation reads, whereas the purpose of Kindness Week is to recognize that simple day-to-day acts of kindness enable our town and schools to be kinder, safer, healthier, and more inclusive places to live, work, learn, and play. And whereas kindness helps us to form meaningful connections with others, which are reported to be a strong factor, increase happiness. And whereas teaching and recognizing kindness in communities fosters empathy, builds community, reduces bullying, and nurtures a safer moment in the environment. And whereas by promoting kindness, we're promoting inclusivity by extending an opportunity for grace, empathy, dignity, acceptance to all citizens in our town. And whereas practicing and celebrating kindness is to look for the good, bridge connections across differences, restore hope, and empower people to make our community stronger and resilient. And whereas the town of Simsberry can lead by example in promoting positivity and supporting a culture where schools, localities, businesses, organizations, and individual citizens can come together to acknowledge, connect, and promote kindness in our communities. Now therefore, I, Eric Wellman, hereby recognize the week of November 29th, 2021 as Kindness Week in Simsberry. I hope our residents will participate, and I look forward to sharing stories next week. I don't know how you make this transition, but I am saying it as an update on the facilities master plan. A little bit of context, our schools went through this process prior to us. The town buildings have also done similar evaluation with TechCon Architects, and that allows us to evaluate the needs of our town.
I appreciate that, Eric, and it is kind of nice to be back and see everybody live and in person. Yes, we want to give an update tonight, we've been working with TechCon since April 2020, so they've really kind of been hammered a little bit by the pandemic and some of the challenges associated with that. TechCon, whenever we talk about TechCon, as much as they're a great architect firm, I think we need to make sure that it's clear that they're part of a team. It's not just the architects, they have mechanical engineers, civil engineers, people who've really gone deep into our facilities to make sure that they understand exactly what we own, so we can also help identify what we are going to need to do in the future to preserve them. The other big component they did, if they took the time to meet with all of the department heads, is talk about how we use our facilities. What are the shortcomings, where are some places that we may need to plan for both short and long term? When we presented back in February, we talked about some specific projects, and today we're going to be touching on holistically the status of where the project is, but we're also going to be keying a little upon the ADA accessibility, which I know for me is a big part of what the town, I think, has responsibility to do. We have wonderful buildings that are historic, and oftentimes that has maybe kept them from being as accessible as they should be. I really think we should always be the leader on that end of things, and they've done a great job with the building. When we're done, I'm going to let Jeff McGelbri, who's the principal architect in charge of this project, talk for most of the presentation. I'll be back up for questions, and then next week we are going to have the opportunity to go deep into the boiler rooms and check out some of the units and everything else that we have to maintain on a day-to-day basis.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Matt, I'm already the principal with TechCon Architects, as Tom has already pointed out. I do want to, I'm going to try and, oh, I think I'm okay with the vision here, so I won't have to refer to my laptop too much here, but. So, Facilities Master Plan, the study itself is over a thousand pages long. We're going to cover all of that in detail. What we'll do is I'll give you a sense, there's an awful lot of information that was pulled together by the team, and we'll give you an overall sense of where we're at and the issues that need to be addressed by the town of Simsberry. So, next slide. Did we skip a slide? I had a little agenda there. It's not. All right, so the agenda for tonight is we'll do a little bit of introduction so that you understand the whole team, we're involved, take a look at some of the project goals. Do a high-level look at some of the existing conditions findings. I want to tell you a little bit about the facilities database that we prepared as part of this study, and then touch on where are some of the next steps and moving forward, and then we'll do some questions and answers. So. So of course, you can't do this study without a lot of support from the staff of the town itself, Cacariola, Ms. Roy, Ms. Athabia, Ms. Wett, Merryweather, Mr. Harris, Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. Shea, all participants in that, and a lot of other people from each of your, your buildings and facilities, departments that we've worked with, spoke with during this, this exercise. And then of course, as Tom also mentioned, you know, there's a whole team of folks on TechCon team that participate, CES, mechanical, electrical plumbing engineers played a big role. They spent lots of time in your boiler rooms and electrical rooms and rooftops. Fossa O'Neil spent a lot of time looking at sidewalks, fences, roadways, and of course, Suzak Associates took a look at some structural issues, particularly a couple of facilities that we called their attention to just to make sure that they're sound and in good position for moving forward. So a whole lot of people involved in this process. So from a goal standpoint, it was important from the town's perspective to get an independent assessment of the buildings and the site conditions for all of those buildings. And because we happen to be the ones that conducted the study for the schools as well, it gives you a consistent analysis, so the same metrics, the same methodologies, and in fact, for the most part, the same people that looked at the schools also looked at the town buildings. So, so there's a balance between the viewpoint in that evaluation. As Tom mentioned, we also talked a lot about programs, and in those program discussions, we learned a lot about the challenges that users face with the facilities. HVAC comes up a lot, we'll talk about that as we go along. We did talk about some strategic implementation, in fact, there's a whole spreadsheet on top of the whole study that we put together that sort of outlines an approach to combining projects so that you get better value or cost savings because of your combining work. It also takes a look at projects of similar character and projects that have happened in a single facility or a single building. Again, looking at ways to maximize the value out of those projects as you move forward. But it is all about holistically looking at all of the repairs over, you know, 10, 5, 10, 15, 20 years, so that you can keep the buildings in good condition. And of course, the long-range planning tool is a piece of that as well, that's, that's part of that spreadsheet that outlines the potential projects over time. All right, so conditions and process and report. There's a lot goes into that, there's a lot of initial data collection, we of course pulled up existing drawings and took a look at the age of all the facilities, including additions and renovations and upgrades and work that went along over the years with the projects or with the buildings. We spent some time evaluating your utility bills so that we could look at payback analysis and whether it would make sense to do certain HVAC upgrades early rather than waiting till end of life, seeing if there was any advantage in that, so that's part of the study that we did. We also looked at previous reports, the master plans, I got to look at your parts, and that master plan is part of this, so we cross-referenced information from there as well. And then of course, our team spent a lot of time out in the site, various sites, visiting the facilities, focusing on accessibility issues, site conditions, building envelope, and making sure that we look at opportunities for improving energy efficiency. Interior conditions, including finishes, the furniture, the millwork, all pieces just inside the building, mechanical systems, we went to boilers and AC units and rooftop units and pumps and all of the various equipment that makes all the mechanical components and all of the electrical lighting, fire alarms, distribution panels, all of those systems that are helping the building function. All of those systems were ranked in terms of their condition, and we also evaluated what is the expected lifespan of many of those elements. I'm going to introduce you to a term that you will see in this presentation, it shows up a lot in the report, and it's, it's called end of useful life. And I know that sounds like that that's the day that everything fails, right? The end of useful life is really the time when you're going to start having increased maintenance costs and the increased potential of failure. So I don't want you to see anywhere where we say end of useful life, it's going to fail tomorrow. That's not exactly the way it works, it's just really going to be when you start paying more to keep it, you know, a lot of that has to do with the availability of parts and older technologies as well. We already talked about the programming sessions, and then we spent a lot of time doing the strategy sessions about how to put together different approaches to looking at these capital improvement issues. And then of course, the identification of all the capital improvements, so each, for every facility we looked at, there's a long list of items, and they vary in scope from things that cost a few hundred dollars to things that cost a couple hundred thousand dollars, depending on what it is. So we try to be as congruous as possible in putting the list of capital improvements in. All right, so we're going to do a little sample of some of those findings, let's start a little bit first here on overall findings. I do want to say the buildings overall are well-maintained, they're, they're, some of them are showing their signs of age, and some of them have a lot more age to show. So those are things to keep an eye on and continually address to make sure that they stay in good condition and stay functional. And, you know, in some cases, it's difficult for the maintenance staff to keep up, particularly with some of the larger scope issues that need to be addressed. Site repairs and improvements from normal wear and tear were observed at all 18 sites. That, that is anything from cracked sidewalks to asphalt that's coming due, to chain link fences that were starting to rust out. So there's a whole lot of just normal wear and tear items sustained with the site. There's that HVAC and other end-of-life upgrades were observed at many buildings. We also noted that building management systems are missing in some buildings. Also that the ability to control and use your HVAC systems efficiently is another opportunity to get better energy efficiency out of all of those. And of course, ADA approvals, we did track those as well. So, that's been fun, and so we, we're going to focus on just four of the major sites at first, and then I'll give you a little synopsis of some of the other things. So we're starting off looking at the town hall, you know, memorial hall, the library, and Simsberry Farms. From the existing condition standpoint, you can see the list of those buildings with their age, the year they built, their age, the size of the building, and whether or not they've had additions, and of course, down at Simsberry Farms, to put the light on this screen, but you get a whole series of the facilities over there that need to be investigated as well. So from a town hall standpoint, we'll touch accessibility first, there's some opportunities here, there is an accessible entrance, but it's not the most gracious entrance in the world for users of the facility with certain disabilities, so we would like to see an improved accessible entrance. Some of the door hardware is, is older, and it does not have the ability to be functioned with those with hand disabilities or certain issues. So we could identify a certain percentage, I think it's about 50% of the hardware should be upgraded and get lever handles so that it's easier to use for certain individuals. Elevator modernization, there were a few buildings, three buildings actually, that we identified the opportunity for doing upgrades to elevators, cabs, and controls, and operational systems as well. And then of course, a future goal is identified down there, that we'd love to see an accessible entry on the main level, so we don't have to travel up or down or to get access to appropriate facilities. From an energy efficiency standpoint, there's an opportunity to replace windows and doors to get more efficient units in those openings. Building openings are a big cause of energy loss. Heating plant, boilers, pumps, et cetera, are, are coming of age, you can see down on the bottom there that 10-plus year. So we've still got some life in them, but there are some other HVAC units that are, are coming of age a little more quickly than that. And there's an example in the middle there, under the words boiler payback. So if you, if you were to upgrade your boiler today, for instance, you would save about $1,150 a year in energy costs because of the higher efficiency. You can see the initial investment's about four to a million dollars for, for that, and if you did it early, say you did it in two years instead of eight years, you'd save $8,000 by, by fancying that. So that's something to be thinking about in terms of payback cycle, do you really get the payback by moving forward earlier? Or do you let it go a little bit closer to the end of life? And, and then realize savings of that. Other HVAC units, including air handling units, air conditioning, et cetera, are also one of the, one of the three period for reaching that end of useful lifetime. Before. Couple life safety issues, fire alarm upgrades is one that we noted at a few facilities. You do have co-compliant firearm systems that are older technology. It does pay to revisit these when our engineers take a look at the life cycle of various building elements, some of them have, you know, 15-year life cycles, some of them have 20, 25-year life cycles. It's important that the technology changes with firearm systems frequently, so they're one of the MEP systems that should assure the lifetime on those systems, where you should consider upgrading to newer technology. Security systems came up at several of the facilities as well, there's an opportunity to improve security system in the town. And then just from a general maintenance standpoint, you can see some of the images there. It's site, site repairs and building repairs can be addressed, site signage is one that is identified, there's a color on Milwaukee path which should be addressed by two of those concrete drainage channels. It's up for repair. Plumbing fixtures and equipment, those are, those are an odd one, because, you know, plumbing fixtures, again, age, and you know, there are some really old, still functioning fixtures, it becomes one of those things where parts and maintenance gets, gets to be more frequent over time. So they're of that three to five-year range. Water distribution, drainage systems, that's one that you need approaching a little bit carefully because some of these are buried in the wall. So those are ones, that's a system that's better addressed maybe when you're doing some addition renovations, opening up some halls, spaces around, trying to pick them up along the way. them up along the way. It's rare, except in the very worst conditions as you go out a bit out of whole wire drainage Moving over to Eno, again, there's, you know, Memorial Hall, there's an opportunity for a more gracious accessible entrance in there. You can see it through the dark tunnel to the left there, the need for despair, creating a gracious entrance in there that really serves this building well to your advantage. There's some minor bathroom issues that you can address. You can see in that photograph, there's some pipes down there that need some insulation. But overall, you did do some bathroom upgrades three years ago, I believe it was. Once again, the door hardware issue, making sure that you have the appropriate handles that are accessible. And there's something I want to say about Eno more at all because it is a historic building. Some of these things, we're going to have to have conversation with the show to make sure that the renovations that are necessary to provide accessibility are appropriate for the historic age. And there's two of them right there that I think are candidates for a discussion with the ship on. That's the sloped floor in the auditorium. In order to get into the auditorium, you come in the back, and then you go down a sloped floor and then onto the flat floor below. That floor is a little bit steep, the modern accessibility guidelines. So whether or not addressing that would compromise the historic character, it's a conversation we engage with the ship on. And likewise, the stage access. I looked at a lot of different ways of how we could access the stage. And usually, you find backstage, you get a place where you can put a lift. There's not a great place backstage for a lift. There's not a great place in front of the stage for a lift. Former orchestra pit has been filled over, and so it creates some challenges. I did see more complicated opportunities, especially with the green rooms downstairs that are separated, segregated. So that's one I think that would be a really important conversation to have with the ship on and make sure that the historic character of buildings is served as you look at any accessibility issues there. And of course, elevator modernization, I mentioned that on the town hall, my missus is part of that. Energy efficiency, replacing windows and doors. Now, you know, we wrote down replacing windows and doors. I'm going to tell you, this really should be restoring windows and doors. What I would suggest, because of the historic nature of this building, is making sure all those wood windows are properly clogged and wood's in good condition at any repairs are done. And any window that does not currently have an interior storm panel, that's something that should, that does go along with for historic buildings, and it will soon improve their energy efficiency. Heating plant boilers, pumps, et cetera, again, go through their lifecycle and of course other HVAC and control systems. All of those can contribute to a more efficient and longer-lasting building in future. And once again, the fire alarm system, you can see it over there on the left-hand side, multiple panels, older technology, particularly if you begin to use this facility more in terms of assembly space, using that stage, making sure that you have a mild enough-to-date firearm system is really important. And again, another building that has the opportunity for the additional security And again, there's a number of site and building repairs that can be addressed. You can see some of the cracked pavement in that photo up in the upper left, some flashing up on the roof that's peeling up. There is some minor painting issues around the building on some of the woodwork. Those are anywhere from the things that should be addressed immediately to the three to five years timeframe. And of course, the tram near the library, site walkways, opportunities for repairs and systems, when you start to open up and painting starts to crack, once again, the And again, we have HVAC control systems. This is another opportunity for the system renovation. We have good control of the building and are able to do proper setbacks to save energy. And there's pneumatic controls in this building that should be upgraded to digital. That's old technology, and it's coming to. And again, some more site repairs and building maintenance sites. These are more minor in nature, just showing, you know, the gauges a little bit. You've got to keep on top of those things to make sure that you have no big problems there. Doing a project for another community, not stay on top of those repairs. It's good to do the mother minder. Over at Simsbury Farms, and we've got obviously a number of different buildings that we're dealing with there, but from an accessibility standpoint, we've got to make sure that the clearances that all the doorways are appropriate so that you have the ability to pull the wheelchair doorway. That requires some site maintenance, doing guardrail heights, and then there's some bathrooms that we'll make sure in Apple Barn that are not compliant with accessibility guidelines. There's a variety of energy efficiency opportunities over there, everything from window replacements to plumbing upgrades to your HVAC upgrades. And I think considering whether or not buildings are serving the best purpose and whether the whole building may yet have its useful life, it's also shouldn't be spending excessive money to maintain and to keep the temper of building that you're not getting great value out of. So either find its true purpose and deal with that, or maybe it's time to move on and think about it. And then, again, life safety issues, fire alarm, it's coming to Apple Barn, rec office, and ice truck. And of course, the recreation office has another opportunity for upgrade with the security. I like that the security system is up as a favorite. And again, some site repairs and building repairs that exist, sea cracks in the asphalt there, no siding maintenance opportunities. And again, those repairs are broken out over the years. And then, there's a lot of other town facilities. So as with the big four, there were a lot of other facilities we looked at, and we see a whole variety of different kinds of maintenance sites, and some of them modest. We looked at a lot of pavilions and parks where we saw, you know, fences and paint jobs, and then some that are a little bit more significant, like the barn there. That could use a bit of love or some decisions about its future, the asset siding and some issues going on there. So rolling through, we'll just take a quick look at some of the other facilities we looked at, just a summation back at the end. Boy Scout Hall. Boy Scout Hall, some minor issues there in terms of that front porch accessibility. The hybrid department, I was just waiting for it. Again, a number of projects that we identified in our evaluation there, bus shelter, spent interior paint jobs. While we're sure of, currently, we identified a number of interior, exterior upgrade projects must be, you know, meeting care variety, open field broadcasting. Who does that remember? Excuse me?
We're jumping up here on that. We've talked about that about three times, a bunch of times.
And underneath the shadow of the. Refrigeration stands, paint jobs getting a little weary on this one. We see green paint. And we took over the performance arts center, stage accessibility, and the opportunity maybe for some additional functional spaces. As well as, one of the things that came up on this one is the provision of additional restroom facilities for the guy that's made it in combination of park around there. So that's an opportunity to get the best, you know, convenience but also accessibility And our other Curtis Park, soccer pavilion, just giving, all of the facilities we looked at, Sebo, Schultz Park Pavilion, yes, maintenance sites came up on looking at those. And of course, WPCA, we had a, interestingly, we had a number of fairly minor maintenance sites that we looked at there having to do with access and functionality and getting equipment in and out of the facilities. And then, of course, we did talk about some potential changes, legislation that could have more significant impacts. So those are identified in the study as well, so keep an eye out. So just a brief look, we sort of combined all of those, looking forward over from immediate to one to three, three to five, five to ten, ten-year. All of those different categories lumped together on all of those facilities. So again, look forward in time at all the buildings and see what that continuous maintenance costs. I'm happy to report that I did see, it's in a five to ten-year, that's actually sort of reflective of the overall study. If you do some of that initial maintenance right away, then you get a little bit of drop-off period where your expenditure goes down, and then you start to get out to that ten-plus year and start to capture some of those HVAC projects on something. So with that, our facilities database. So as part of this study, this isn't always done on master plan studies, but we helped prepare along with Mr. Roy and all of his staff, a database tool to help them track all of these projects. Basically, all of the information that we gathered is contained in this database. So if some of the facility staff is interested in looking at the Apple Barn, they can click that on the database and find, pull up the floor plans and drawings that can give you age of equipment. We built a section where they can identify paint colors, material types, so that there's a pretty tool to have all of the maintenance issues wherever possible. We got model items, manufacturer data. Again, so click forward and you can find information before you actually head out the field and go find the nameplate before you get the car and head out that way. So that's a great tool. There's lots of empty fields still available for it, but things that we did not look at during our investigation. But hopefully, that becomes a great tool that the town uses in the next one. Fine, next steps. I got one more slide to say.
I can't get back down.
All right, so those next steps are to participate in the upcoming site tour. It is nine eleven eighteen, I apologize. It's that, that's the one I sent the other day. It is eleven twenty-nine. I did see the email come out with all the invites. So I look forward to touring all these facilities and taking a more close-hand look at some of the things that we discovered, and some of the minor things as well, some of the more significant things that are coming up over that maintenance period. I did mention that I had to review and approve the capital project list, that the project list was prepared to consolidate all these findings. I think I talked about combining similar scopes together, projects of single facility are consolidated, and, you know, we had a number of strategy sessions to sort of map out an approach to addressing maintenance issues longer term. So now.
Well, now we're going to see what they have left for questions, but I can tell you, appreciate all the work that you did. Again, this has been helpful. There's so much to get your arms around, and, you know, hopefully, we'll be in toward and bring up some of these issues and just, Jeff was saying, it's not the end-of-life means that you're throwing it out that day, but it's time when all of a sudden maintenance starts taking over and you start spending more time making maintenance over. You know, it's when, you know, Phil, best if used by. You can go both days after, but do you really want to? It's the car with a hundred fifty thousand miles on it. It still works, but once in a while, you're going to get the phone call, "It didn't start today," and you don't have it.
So the, I think this is somewhat said here, so appreciate your hope. I also appreciate if you didn't go through the agenda and go by by wine. So the, maybe it would be helpful in the, I'm assuming that either names specifically or as part of a larger identified project we have in our CIP, maybe we could just highlight those as they, if you blend the two together, if you blend our budget, our strategic plan with this, sort of note things that are already in, what is already identified as a large scope project, just so I can, can't work on some of these. Interestingly, when I heard about this project, I was like, oh, we're going to get about it. And there were three hundred million dollar bill. And so I thought we were, that was the scale of what we were talking about, but I realized this is encompassing plans that we already have in place. For example, town hall, we know that we've got this consideration to the police department, right, and the renovation of town hall. Well, how much of that is, are the consideration of that grant or plan? Same thing with Eno. Yeah, I saw the Schultz Park Museum, we've already talked about Schultz Park Museum this year already and wanting toward that. Again, it's kind of helpful that these are not outliers or outside of the plan, but show us where they already are conclusive of plans that are already considered. Not that that changed the value of that, it just helps me.
No, I think there's two interesting points there. First thing, what TechCon did, and I think was, was really, you know, above and beyond, is they took apart our master plan, which a lot of those facilities were outside of what we originally contemplated as a facility master plan. And they incorporated it into this so that we can start looking at things larger. And we do still have a challenge in this in our, because we have projects that we need to do building by building, where we'll take Eno and do the elevators and all the fixtures and all the windows, or do we go the other way and we do all of our elevators in all of our buildings at one time? So we have one elevator project, capital project, and we're multiple. We now have the flexibility to look at it either way. So it gives us an opportunity to go through and do that analysis and give you the answer to look at.
We also did an exercise where we looked at all the minor, the real ones, so maybe that could be addressed in simple budget and then more significant projects and discussions.
I have just one question with Melissa, Sean, and we've been, I'm the ARCA worker talking about capital projects where you could potentially do some of the funding that we're getting for HVAC or sewer and drainage, and Amy's the expert. We're waiting for the final guidance in January, but some of the problems we have is a lot of the items that Melissa pulled out from these projects are out three to five to ten years. We only have three years to use and spend the money, and sometimes the question comes up, can we decouple it from the future and over here because we could pay for it here, but then you disrupt the whole plan? So that's just a question.
To start, I would say is, if there's an opportunity for free money for grant, it would be certainly to find ways to accelerate projects to take advantage of that.
Is there no ADA? I'm so surprised.
It's not that specific.
They have Tyler and six women. I mean, to me. I'm just incredibly surprised.
The only reason HVAC is in scope is because it cleans the air and all that, it's the last, I mean, that's the only reason. I mean, it seems ridiculous that we can use ARCA money for air conditioning, but it's to clean the air.
But that's a good point, if there is nothing specifically wrong with you.
This is, a lot of the basis of this one's coming out with health-based, experiential quality of life, that's a needs offspring.
All recuperations, like there.
But that makes too much sense. I don't want to do that now.
They don't want me to talk.
But we have, what, eighty-five million, give or think, in buildings in this community? So, I mean, there's a number that we have to put up, just like in our house, right, or five hundred thousand dollar house, whatever, it's three hundred thousand dollar house. You know, you're investing a percentage every year in maintenance of that, right? And, you know, when we look at this, some of the. And, you know, when we look at this, some of this is to catch us off, right? In terms of, some of us is, is part of our team. So I think, you know, it's a valuable tool for me to step back and look at, you know, what do we have from an ongoing standpoint? And much like we put the plan together for the roads, we want to get to an 85, right? So what's the, what's the level that we want as a community to get to the improvement of our buildings? And if you invest, as you pointed out, one to three, the, you know, the five year term, the 10 year term, to get to that level of investment and how we can do those actions.
I would also point out another opportunity from the H V A C standpoint is, you know, upgrading the improvement that you have with new equipment. Certainly giving improved efficiency. It is possible to look at this in terms of improving the overall fresh air volume. I mean, all of your, your buildings, built under air codes, when you were built in. Many of those had a lesser fresh air requirement than what we are currently doing in light of the situation that we built into our new buildings. So that specific estimate is not necessarily the best. Please. But if you were to say, look at building that had, you know, air handling units, it might be an opportunity to increase the overall airflow. Exhaust water, bringing more pressure into the machine.
Yeah, I mean, especially 114 year old buildings.
That exactly is why.
And the other piece to that is, like, energy efficiency. We're talking about cost of operations. There's also occupancy cover. The way the system works at Town Hall is when the unit turns on, it turns on, and when it shuts off, it shuts off. Very, very simple in terms of that, but it means the temperature is constantly fluctuating. Room heats up. Also, the air conditioners kick on and cools it to a point, they shut off, and the cycle continues. People go through states of being uncomfortable. There are better modern systems which would have variable frequency drives. So you know what? We need just a little air. You know, drive your car with an on off pedal and drive the gas pedal. That's what we'd like to get to in all of the buildings.
Yeah. Again, from the maintenance and the planning standpoint, I always appreciate this. And then it, it puts a very clear set of facts out for both it was a community. And it's up to, right, the six of us with our peers on the board of finance, very important. I appreciate this versus, and again, you know, we haven't, we haven't given town staff the resources needed to advocate those projects and the best way, kind of doing it, you know, as best you can on a just in time basis, which crack is the biggest this year and we gotta go deal with that, right?
Let's look at the picture. Eno, where Jeff is on the rear side entrance, which is really the primary way to enter. You're going into a tunnel. It's also the only air closed accessible entryway. And that's how we're working people into this fantastic historic building. It's how we invite people into our senior center. And the walls, crooked. It wasn't that. So I, I think there's some opportunities that we, we really can improve the overall appeal of our building. And I like how in the slide of this building, it showed how the carpeting, replacing the carpeting last year. It's made it feel better and nicer. Again, I think, you know, we have an obligation to give our message the best quality we can.
Which is that, the front entrance is one of the most beautiful doors. They have one.
And the other, it was not the ARPA on this one entrance, but it's difficult to get a stretcher in that. Sadly, in seniors, we've had to have people, you know, fairly, you know, a few times a year, somebody's gonna have an accident, slip or fall. The other thing is when that mechanical door breaks, because all mechanical doors break, I truly feel we shouldn't keep the building open. We no longer are accessible in there. So if we're able to do our, our project here that we like to, we would make the south side entrance accessible. Then make this side welcoming and accessible.
Well, to that point, much like slow, oh, mid, sorry, upstairs. Having worked on cheese steak or things, there are people who can't push the cars up those stairs. And not the lack of effort, just they can't do it. It's, it's, we want to be welcoming and set people up to succeed. I think that's our job and that's our goal, but that is not very welcoming. And it is really unsafe in the winter. That's a great place. If we had 15, one of those slides.
Slide down there.
Yeah. Well, I, I really think this is a great tool. I think that very much well.
One thing, thank you. I'm not gonna repeat what's been, what's been said, but I, I hope that, I don't know if this was specifically part of your scope, but a staff is evaluating and prioritizing, you know, where we go from here. I hope we also consider what buildings can be always perfectly, looking to sell off.
I, I think, I think you hinted pretty heavily, pretty heavily on the apples.
Are you doing email that time? We didn't rehearse that either.
I, yeah, for 3100 square feet, I feel like we should. Those from below locker are listening. I am committed to finding you another location, but, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. What, you know, would be great to be with, with that, there are maybe 10 year, I'm sorry, my, my, I can't go through 1000 pages. But I like this. I like the 21st day summer. The decommissioning in certain spaces would is our bunch cherry for that and the positive to that. I think that's a good answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Olivia. Move on to the first electors report. Today is the final regularly scheduled meeting of the board's selectmen during this current term. To our current board members, Sean Askin, Mike King, Chris Peterson, Jackie Batters, my new next student. I thank you for your service, Arpa here. It's been an absolute pleasure working with all of you. I want to share a very special thank you to Mike King and Jackie Batters for your work. I think Jackie are both lifelong Simsbury residents and I know that they will both continue to give timely service to my community. I also want to share my appreciation to Sean for serving as deputy during this term. Our bipartisan partnership is one that I would encourage. When we took the oath in December of 2019, it's known, it has known, how much our world will only change over the next two years. We did work, work to keep our residents safe and our government functioning during this unprecedented time. One of the things I appreciate about this group is that we leave politics out of politics. We don't always agree or see eye to eye, but we do share a common love for Simsbury. And I, I definitely try to serve the whole. Finally, I want to thank our community for trusting me to serve as your first elect in these past four years. It's been an incredible blessing and a privilege to get to know so many people through this work to have a hand in Simsbury's transition to this conforming government. And oath of office ceremony is scheduled for December 6th, 6:00 PM at Eno Memorial. All, all incoming office holders and families are invited. I wish, what are your next students? The best issues in the world for selectmen, and I'll be working with her over the next couple of weeks and beyond to ensure a smooth transition. Coming up to the time of the year, Simsbury Celebrates will take place in Simsbury, Saturday, November 27th, from 5:00 to 8:30. It will look much more like we are accustomed to seeing than, than what we did last year. So we're looking forward to celebrating with our community. If you go to Simsburycelebrates.com, you can find a full rundown of events. Simsbury Main Street Partnership is continuing its annual tradition of Black Friday and Small Business Saturday. So the Friday and Saturday after Thanksgiving, residents will have the opportunity to purchase gift cards at about 200 local businesses. For every $50 spent, people receive a free $10 gift card. And you can visit shop@simsbury.com for a whole list of participating businesses. In collaboration with community volunteers, the Chamber of Commerce is presenting Simsbury Lights the Night from November 26th to December 2nd. Businesses and residents are encouraged to decorate their locations and enter their address as participants. There is more information available on the Chamber's Facebook page and the website. On first Thursday of each month, the Spirit Council hosts a virtual panel discussion as part of their Last Spots series. On December 2nd, the conversation focuses on COVID and its impact on mental health registration. This discussion is free and it's available on the library's website. I'll leave it there.
Great. Thank you, Derek. If you think we want. Started off with our pandemic update. We are currently at Orange Sabbath for the most recent two week period ending November 14th. That is the third consecutive reporting period where we've opened at Orange Sabbath. We have been relatively stable in terms of our number of new cases for the last month, with numbers we had 19 weeks per week, 18 weeks per week, 18 weeks per week, and then 20 new days per week. I did, however, after completing this report today, we did receive some preliminary information from the health district. I do expect that our next reporting period will see quite a bit of an uptick in cases. So as soon as they do have that information available, I will be sure to, to share that with you all. The health district, as a 10 time district, did see a bit more of an uptick in this most frequent reporting period than we did. Again, we're also stable for the last four weeks. So in their most recent reporting period, they had 91 new cases for 100,000 residents compared to the week prior of 202 cases for 100,000 residents. So again, pretty significant uptick for the health district. In terms of the student sequence though, they are still at the health district. They are still in the state of category, but getting a little bit closer to high. And Hartford County and Susan, that again, I'm trying to go back to the highest status on the T E P methodology. The Orange Valley Health District is focusing its vaccination efforts right now on vaccinating children as well as providing boosters to combat individuals that they have previously assisted. The health district has three first dose and three second dose clinics stipulated here in the Orange Valley for children that are aged than five years and older. First dose clinic was held here in Simsbury on Saturday at Henry Dean, and the second dose clinic will be held here on the summer of 11th. They are estimating that all of those local clinics they're providing will provide to approximately 1500 children with the county. So a really remarkable number. I was actually in attendance at the event that they did last year on Saturday. And just really wanted to commend the health district staff and the volunteers. So many volunteers were needed to pull up that effort, but it's a really different process to vaccinate your young children compared to adult population. And they just really lifted the challenge. They just did such a remarkable effort. So who goes to the health district and the volunteers? The Department of Public Health and the governor are encouraging those of us who are adults and have already been vaccinated if it's been 15 months or, or more to seek a booster. So we just want to make sure to provide them to that information for our residents seeking booster locations here in the area. Just a couple of items under Board of Selectmen business, as Tom and Jeff mentioned earlier. We do have the facilities tour coming up on Monday to 29th. They just sent a long note today, just said that your plans have changed. So it's okay, it's less snow, and we'll do a rest of our property before morning or after the convention. We have the annual tri-boarding coming up on December 1st, and we're still working on details on super tennis training. So I'm leaving tomorrow to finalize if we'll be able to property in person or virtually. And as well as the 5:30, we're supposed to start buying. We are still working on the Board of Selectmen full setting session. I apologize that we are having such a hard time finding a date this year. I think we now hold about 12 or 13 different dates in the year, just not coming over the date that works for everybody. What we're gonna keep working on that, I'm confident.
I actually asked, I actually asked, see, I didn't, because it's my birthday weekend, so that's the problem.
We're getting closer. We found the dates for five people, so we are getting closer. And just to give you some more orientation, so again, I'm really pleased enough that we have been able to schedule sessions for our selectmen members as well as our board of finance members. And that's just an opportunity, both my head change to do with finding and drafting with the air community members. We just go over things such as former government, FOIA, Ethic Code, court, attorney, courts. So just an example of the sort of method, both kind of left up and fighting with just the whole, you know, parts of the job. So you will be happy to do that with our members and that. And for department news and notes, I just reminder that the Newington Frey Farms basement is now open. We do have a link to the schedule and the manager's report. And from the library, this is a really exciting news. So may you recall that we were awarded the ARPA grant for libraries to purchase the book site, which will be used for outreach, escorting and screening of 2022. It has arrived. So we do currently have that on display at the library. We did the answer and we did some media posts. So I would definitely encourage us to either check it out online, because it will be awarded, or to take a peek at the library. And quick, few great things for a port from public work. Calroy, our director, I gave a presentation to the Connecticut Training and Technical Assistance Center as part of their complete street spotlight series. The hands we focused on from our recent efforts that the town has done to slow down to create safer travel environments for residents. You may recall we did that pilot, clearly pilot project over in the North Drive area. And more recently, we're just conducting a study of the data drive area. So my thanks to Tom for sharing the good work that he and our staff have done here with our lawyer, Connecticut. And a recent appointment, we have Matt and Hopkins that will be joining our team as our new facilities supervisor for the town. He's going to begin work on December 13th. He comes to us after serving for four years as a maintenance coordinator for the town of Thomasville. Prior to his municipal service, he had experience in the credit sector, particularly in areas of construction and homeowner modeling. So we're really excited to have him here on our team and welcome him to the organization. On a separate note, some of the neighbor Paul Walter O'Wally of Donald, he worked in our highway department for nearly 30 years. He had so many contributions to our community. I know folks were very fond of him. He retired from service in 2013. And he sadly passed away. So I did just want to share that with you all, recognize contributions to our community. We've also provided a technical area for those that may be. And lastly, from public work, in regards to data drive traffic calming study, we currently have a survey underway to, in addition to the data that we collect, we have a survey underway to ascertain some of the feedback, particularly from folks who live in the neighborhood, who travel in that area often. We would really appreciate their participation in the survey. So again, we provided a link to that in the tablet under performance. And two quick updates on social services. Just a reminder that the annual holiday program is underway. We are accepting donations for that program, or if you are somebody who would like to participate, to please reach out to Social Services. And lastly, for social services, again, another appointment, Lisa Sharp has started as our coordinator of elderly outreach services. Lisa actually brought here in Simsbury and had a really interesting first career in fashion design in New York City, and then made a clear switch about 10 years ago and went to do the therapeutic recreation for elderly folk and has been working in that field since that point in time. Relocated back to the area here. So we're really glad to have how we're doing our team. She just recently started at Social Services. We really want to make sure that that's the block and phone number. Thank you.
I did notice, I did notice the whites.
Yeah, they, they, yes, wonderful.
People, you really.
Selectment action. I have a tax refund request. Is there motion effective November 22nd, 2021 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $2,333.88 and authorize Town Matter to apply that comment to the next section?
No.
On a whole thing?
Aye.
I am being with a community challenge grant that the Performance Arts Center has interested in applying for. What we are seeing is that there is a really significant amount of, well, a once in a lifetime or once in a generation money that's coming through the federal rescue plan to communities. And this is one of those opportunities. This is the opportunity to apply for a grant anywhere from $1 million to $10 million for qualifying projects. And this could intentionally fund some of the phase two work that we've been hearing about at the Performance Arts Center. This grant does come with a requirement of a 50% match, but at this point in the process, this would just be a letter of interest or a letter of intent, which would tell us whether we really would take that step. Then, so if you was here from the Performance Arts Center board, I'd want to see if anyone had any questions for her or my staff on this item.
I think this is potentially a good thing for the town to get involved. My, my concerns were not so much more with the process than actually doing this. If I understand correctly, we're not committing the town to anything. If I understand correctly, we're not committing the town in anything. And I would also ask, and we don't necessarily need an answer now, but down the road from the Performing Arts Center, on what they would be able to contribute. I don't think that all this should come out of the town's pockets. It all come out of the town's pockets, one way or the other, but I think it should be a partnership and in some fashion. And I'm not necessarily looking for an answer right now, but I think that's a unusual kind of thing to have.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're not expecting it to come out, which you can share.
I'm, my lady, if I speak more specifically than I can, but the pack is looking formally at your ability to fundraise. I don't know what the formal word is for that, but.
Yeah, we're doing a feasibility study at this point. We've engaged a consultant to help us with a fundraising project. Unfortunately, both the ARPA grant and this Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant, if that comes to mind, are due in January, and that feasibility study won't be done by then, so we won't know precisely what the consultant thinks we can raise. And even then, that's that consultant's opinion as opposed to when the rubber meets the road. But, you know, we have been working to, you know, build up our coffers over the years, and so certainly expect to be able to raise some money to be able to participate in this whole process. I do just want to clarify, you said that the PAC wants to apply for this. It's actually the town that has to apply, just to be clear. So we would work, we're anxious to work with Maria, because we only really have, when you think about between now and the duvet of these two very, very large grant application processes, we have less than six real weeks with holidays thrown in there to get all of that done, and it's a lot of work, so we would jump right in and organize that.
So when does the grants have to begin with? Let's see, Earl, please send it. They're both in January, I can't say when they're like precise. Fourteen for the, and, yeah. Or the first. And so early.
It's in this little sheet that we.
So I see that we're getting, it's not just packs up, it's surrounding packs up, like the light, the electrical upgrades, replacements, some of the stuff included in the grants for us, right? That's.
Yes, and in fact, I'm interested to learn more about what your facilities study found, because we haven't participated with TechCon anyway, so I don't know what they found, but when Maria and I and Eric met about this, that at least a month or more ago, there were several things, and we were trying to figure, all right, let's throw in everything, including the kitchen sink, that may already be on the town's radar screen. So some of those kinds of things include things like replacing light poles on that dirt access road. That's not something the PAC cares about, but the town does, so sure, let's throw it in there. LED screens that Tom Zabreski wanted, irrigation system, replacing siding on the existing stage. Again, these are not things that the PAC cares about, but if we can include them so that it reduces the burden on the town to do, I mean, to do the hundred percent of town expense, if we can get matching money on that, let's go for it. But I mean, this is a partnership, so we need to work together, maximize the value we literally can get for both sides.
Are the grants being done, are we working with the PAC on the grants? Like, who owns the grants, I guess?
We haven't started either one. We're anxious to do that, and we'll do that together. But both grants have to be submitted by the town.
Okay, so we have, but you would be the opposite one, and it would be charity for both. Okay, oh, so there's a, a letter of intent is for one of them, is December third, is that okay? Is that any trouble to get that done? Oh, we're good.
If it's a draft, that's, that's what we're doing.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just possess enough time. Thank you. The only other thing I want to clarify is this, when you talk about ARPA, it's not our ARPA, it's a different ARPA.
It's a different ARPA.
Yeah, it's our ARPA, it'll think we can use for.
Cause free money ever.
Yeah, that's funny. So we may find out in January if they change the final ruling. We don't think that's going to happen, but. And then just the only financial thing that we have right now is a commitment, is the three hundred for the bathrooms that we are designating in reserves. We talked about a couple when we were at the board.
As part of our city, that's.
Yeah, but it's, it's just.
This would be.
Capital reserves, yeah.
Okay, that's all. Yeah, and I'll just comment that, you know, if we don't get grants, if we, if we don't, you know, get to take advantage of this opportunity, then obviously, you know, there wouldn't be extra money going forward. So in talking with Lisa, she had suggested, and I need to work with Bobby D on this, but, you know, that maybe there's a way to, you know, work for it, assign reserves, so that way it doesn't impinge on your capital plan or your budget, your operating budget. It just sort of earmarks some money in reserves, and that way, if you don't use it, it doesn't, doesn't take away from anything else.
That's, yeah, okay, so from a financial standpoint here, has this been presented to the board of finances? Because if I'm reading the numbers, four million bucks is what we're applying for. So roughly, the grant would be one set, or, yeah, no, grant would be, what, two, three? Do we get, or two, excuse me, I have one that backwards, two, seven.
Has not come to the board of finance.
Where I'm getting at is, so the grant will be two, seven, and the town would have to kick in one, three, five. That would be a fifty percent to get to the total of four million. And given what we went through at Meadowwood, not at the similar amount, I'd be concerned with the board of finances tolerance for this. So, I mean, I'm fine with it tonight, but, I mean, we had even more funding for Meadowwood, and we're not as ready to answer this. I just, I want to be careful when we navigate that process. I'm looking for more finance.
I look at it, it's an additional part, which is the trees and bathrooms and very good stuff. I, yeah, converged around, so I think that's.
And again, I mean, the PAC is assuming that they'll come up with capital money, and.
No, I agree, there's a lot of assumptions here. And at the end of the day, we get, we get, and the board beaten up pretty hard over five thousand bucks sometimes. So I just think we need to make sure that we have the appropriate conversation along the way, and we don't go through, we just look through again.
Right. The other thing I'd say is what Maria and we need to do is to look through the budget, I mean, and decide, I mean, we did throw in everything but the kitchen sink in here, and actually, I'm keeping the kitchen sink as well. Not everything is that urgent in here, so if there really is a crunch and inability to come up with that much money, there's things in here we can easily get rid of. I mean, we were really trying to make it as big as possible, so.
We were spending, we're spending earmarking, money out here for them. Parking lot improvement, for the environmental bag for the parking lot, and that's the bathrooms already, so I don't know, I think we're closing the gap pretty quickly with projects, knowing that the board of finances is going to be. I think that completely agree with the dialogue challenges, but I think this from a project standpoint, they're already having dialogue about existing projects that we're committing to versus better, which is something that came out of.
Yeah.
Don't disagree with these, oh, remember, we just had, we just saw ten million capital, there's another ten million that's not on there from agents. And at the school, and if you have to ask me right now, you know, the town assets got first, and I know this is a town asset, but it's going to be a very difficult conversation when we get to the budget and the board of finances, if we actually want to approve this money. It's easy for us to say yes tonight when I'm actually committing it, and I recommend we should commit it tonight, but let's not, let's not lull ourselves into a easy conversation for twelve or eighteen months, when we already know we're over the debt policy, we need to come back down, and our friends and the board of finances, right, so, are going to want our prioritization, and we're just getting to get into the thought, we're going to go through this, where does this fall in those priorities? I agree, it's important to invest in this, and whether, you know, I love the PAC, I think we need to invest in it, we should have more, but again, you know as well as I do, the capital challenges, we haven't come down the road in six years, so.
I mean, the one thing I echo that Eric said was that, you know, we're getting, there's an opportunity for state with federal money that's kind of once in a lifetime, and so if we're ever going to do this, and we've been talking about it for fifteen years now is the time, because it's going to be a lot cheaper than if we wait and then do it entirely out of our own pockets.
I agree, I'm still walking a little route from Meadowwood. We learned from our stories, but no, I agree, that's worth it. Is there a motion effective November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one to authorize submission of a letter of intent and grant application for a new grant for the Performing Arts Center? So, I'm with that.
Awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Item C is the work grant for the economic development commission. There were, is a few things I'll highlight, a few additions to it, but also, you know, work selectmen, hopefully in the next month or two, we'll be meeting to talk about what it is the priorities are for the next two years. We can always add or change the work plan in the future, but I wanted to highlight a few items on the list that are changing. One is a focus on business outreach for medium and smaller businesses, and in particular, we had some discussion around tech, tech businesses in particular, and really have the next year focus on that group of businesses, and we got by trends and things within that area. The other is an update to the town's website to make it more business friendly to businesses who are interested in opening or expanding here, and then a welcome letter packet for businesses. None of these things would come with any particular cost or expenditure. Jackie, anything that you want to add?
Just that, lastly, Teresa, about the report, the annual report. So has that been updated to reflect this? Because there were things in there that we had asked to be changed or modified.
How would that be different?
So it doesn't match the work plan now? Because the annual report had co-working spaces in it, it had like three monetary items in it, it had due to business, that guide, so in our discussion, we had kind of, we had given feedback that we wanted to change the annual report.
I would say I didn't quite follow that in the discussion, typically, there were four under activities from here prior, and you have it, you're asking to change the report on our activities.
Right. These were all report, these were all initiatives. Yeah, so there were my items, sorry.
Well, I'm just going to say, are you saying that the work, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two EDC work plan that was in the annual report is not what we're agreeing to tonight, just a little bit more scaled down? Is that what you're saying? So, so those, the annual report stands as it is, we know now that this is really the work plan that we're placing or is in now, right? So are you just asking, should it be updated? And the real one, or does it stay the way it is?
Yeah, there's initiatives in there, and there's, there's budget items.
With co-working spaces in there. Again, I mean, at this point in time, it's going to be the budget, but.
Yeah, not for this.
This is development for co-working.
Your question went up yesterday, looking at the twenty twenty-one, there's a site, there's two, yeah, so we've got their proposed work plan for the upcoming year, which is twenty-one, twenty-two, so that is the thirty-nineth of that.
So this isn't one continuous document, this is two different contracts?
Exactly, right, and then the other one is just an update on what we had accomplished for the twenty twenty-one. This was the draft one, the first one, the upcoming year.
So the marketing refresh, business outreach, business outreach new, business outreach again, so there's two business outreach, support entrepreneurs, the spy.
The one on the draft, right, is the draft for the upcoming year versus the one on page forty is just the, it's the past year that you guys asked, or whatever.
So Sean, the draft that we're talking about on page thirty-nine does not match what we discussed last week, the annual report. So the annual report is one thing, but in that, there were EDC initiatives that we discussed.
So to your point, though, is there wasn't support at that time for co-working space, or it shouldn't be in here, right?
Right, so it's not in here, it's in the, it's in the report.
It is, it's because we asked them to do it last year, but it wasn't done, right? Because we didn't fund it.
Okay.
So I guess I'm up here, as long as it's not in the work plan coming up, that's all that matters. Sorry, I'm catching up on the conversation. I honestly, I see it now where I looked, I didn't look at the title. Honestly, it's a project plan. Yeah. Is there a motion effective November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one to adopt the twenty-one, twenty-two EDC work plan? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D is, the next two items are from the open space committee. The first is proposed revisions to the open space natural stewardship policy. So proposed revisions include adding proportion of the Meadowwood property designated as open space, and better defining the applicable portions of the Ethel Walker Woods parcel. On this item or the other item I saw, Susan Messino walked in, although she's blocked by the pony, my Susan.
Hello.
If there are any questions on either of these items, she is here to answer them. Are there any questions on item D?
Question. Initially reading this, I missed the fact, but I believe I found that the town can, I'm going to use my old words, to maintain the Ethel Walker Woods paths. If a tree falls down, we can move it out of the way, but we're not going to go in and do clearing of the woods and stuff. And I am okay with that. My only concern is that forest age, and if you don't thin the forest periodically, you end up with forests that pretty much have all overgrowth, and there is not young pines and ferns and briars in there, which generate different animals within them. It's okay, you just need to realize that's what you're going to get. Going to the old growth forests, there is nothing on the ground because everything is covered, and there's a canopy that discourages that. It'll be bad, we just need to go in and, hey, make sure that we can keep the paths open, but also that this will be the ultimate outcome of this, way beyond my tenure here, if it's above the ground.
Susan, is that something you want to speak to?
Um.
Please, correct me if I'm.
Sure, sorry, I'm doing my grading over here. Sure, so I mean, we're talking about like the long, long term, is that ultimately, in these old forests, like a big tree dies, or there's a storm, or something bugs, or something happens, that creates the kind of openings that will then allow that new stuff to come in. So over time, an old growth, old growth area becomes a mosaic of all different types of habitat. So that's what we're kind of expecting will happen, and we can definitely take care of downed trees and all that kind of stuff in the meantime.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
No, thank you. Susan, voice it back. Just, for just an example, with Ethel Walker, you know, like, it's a learning cycle, so what came about in Ethel Walker that draws us to this point of, give you an example of why we're making the decision around changing somewhat the approach of Ethel Walker, what do we see here happening?
This is actually what's been going on, except for at one point, I think in the eighties or nineties, the Ethel Walker School did do some logging in the woods, so nothing's really happened since then. Reason why we started looking at this in open space, I feel like we can't. Oh, no, there's nobody behind me. I thought there was somebody between you and Maria, the post is so big. Is, we were just trying to look at our open space and sort of make a strategic plan, like what are the areas we need to maintain regularly, like if it's a meadow or a shrubby area or our sports fields, and what are the areas that we just need to worry about down trees and, you know, less regular stuff to try to help make kind of a strategic plan. So we're not. So we're not worrying about everything all the time. And then part of this going forward is to try and identify like a volunteer group. It might be sort of the eyes on the ground for some of these other pieces. Like we have the scouts are interested in building. We have some people interested in the Ethel Walker Woods. I'm sure on the mountain. And then through open space, we've been pulling together some documents from other towns like Ridgefield has this program called the Ridgefield Rangers, which are people that go and like check on things and report to the town, like, oh, there's a problem or everything's cool. And then, then the town can still do monitoring, but it doesn't have to be like such regular work for the town. So that's kind of the, the thing. Nothing really happened. It was just kind of trying to make a strategic.
What, people ask me all the time, why do you have to be here? They've been there for 20 plus years, probably. It looks like per test tubes. What were those, what were those friends of?
Yeah. So those, people might remember that the Ethel Walker School was going to develop that property. And so each one of those tubes is a per test for septic system that is planned there. And unfortunately, they, I don't know how to get them out. I thought that the company that did that work would pull them eventually, but that hasn't happened. So I would love to get them pulled out because it's just plastic. It's just gonna be great there.
Two of them were kind of like bricks.
Yeah, it's fairly unsightly. 100 point D. I don't know. If there's extra, extra time in the town budget, maybe we can dig those out. So I wouldn't be opposed to that, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sir, a motion effective November 22nd, 2021 to adopt the proposed revisions to the open space natural stewardship policy. Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item E is proposed open space acquisition criteria and guidelines. So this was also approved by the open space work group and the open space committee, providing criteria that the town should consider when acquiring space parcels. Or see if there were any questions.
Spring us in anyway. It's just a guiding principle document.
Yes.
Only that makes sense, but you know, I agree with properties. Someone's best intention of processing concerns.
Susan, nodding as well.
Yeah, just a, just a point about this. Only thing that's on here that we actually wrote was the first paragraph and then the 15 points at the end. The rest are sort of grant programs and criteria that's part of state documents that I think Mike Litten put together. So we just tried to think of all of the things that would be values that we want to see. And if you notice, a lot of them are on water. I know it's just so critical to have clean water. And then other kind of special natural features. That's what that 15 point list is. And it's just, you know, these are the things we reconsider if a piece is valuable or not. So we don't assign any point criteria or any kind of, you know, there's no kind of ordering of the list. It's just a list of things.
I'd like to thank Susan and Marjorie and the rest of the open space work group members for their work on this policy and these guidelines. Because it's something that I think as a community needs very much needed. I know some folks on the board are aware, an anecdote I'm going to share, but what, I think it was within my first few weeks of being here, one of our staff members approached me and said, hey, we've got this open space parcel, but we need to accept on a management agenda. And I started asking questions of, oh, you know, what's that, what are our open states, maybe new, what are our open states, you know, criteria, guideline? You know, where does this fall in terms of strategic acquisition? And they're asking these questions and the person says like, oh, no, it's just a taxpayer who doesn't want to pay taxes on the vacant land with our interiors. They just want to pivot to us. And I remember being struck by that. I said, well, certainly we have not just been accepting parcels that people don't want to be taxed upon. And that was, and yeah, that's what we do. And for me, that was a very Iowa meek grand, this is an area of work that we have a lot of work to do. And again, I just think that Marjorie and Susan and the rest of the team, it's been amazing job of putting together a very thoughtful policy. Again, it's very strategic and will put the rights, you know, protecting our water resources, protecting our wildlife door for doors. Again, that when we are thinking about acquiring an open space, then again, it's strategic, it's thoughtful, it's sensible. Because if they want to, right, that's what's going to make our open space portfolio, we have value to it. So I'm really, really excited about this policy.
Is there a motion effective November 22nd, 2021 to adopt the proposed open space acquisition criteria and guidelines? As we tend to move. Jack, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. opposed? Motion carries. Item G is a review of the temporary committee. Of that, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, right. Sorry. That's an important one. Item F is a summary of the town manager performance review. The packets is, is a summary of the review that we did back in September. Overall, she received a rating of above expectations with comments provided in each category with areas assumed an opportunity. Following a satisfactory review, town manager's contract also salary increase that's commensurate with other nitrogen employees. This year, the board approved a 2.35% wage increase, which is in line with other community communities. I wanted to see if there were any questions on this item.
Just to come back again, Eric, thank you again for leading us through this process and Wendy enjoyed it. That's my own personal, obviously all my peers here. And I think, and again, it's, as I've noted previously, and I'll take the opportunity to say, it's interesting as we continue to transition. We're four years into a transition, but in many ways, we very much are. Folks that are nostalgic from prior form of government give us a lot of feedback along the way of different things. And I think this review very much exemplifies one of his performance. But it, it might not always match what people think or, or experience. And again, I want to take folks, have folks have the chance to have the opportunity to remember we're the legislative body. We're the folks that are elected to represent the, you know, the 25,000 people in town. And Maria is hired by this board, right, to, to manage the community. And again, that's a bit different. And so when folks look at this, remember, we're hiring and maintaining a highly professional, highly educated, deep experienced staff here. And it's really hard to articulate in these documents or without sitting in one of these chairs, and I think you all agree with me, of the value that Maria and Melissa, Amy and all of our town staff bring. It's not really apparent to a, to a taxpayer, to a resident, you know, that, you know, that, that has a challenge along the way. And again, I think this, this review exemplifies a really strong asset in what we have in the town manager. And again, remember, this is a, this is not a deep pool of talent out there. But there's not a lot of folks that wake up as little kids, little boys, little girls, you want to go into. Not only public service, but public service on the, on the paid side, getting master degree in this. Work really, really hard and then get paid a lot less than you potentially would in the private sector. And there were the public, public challenges that go with it. And I think we've got a unique asset in Maria Capriola that not only does she possess the professional abilities, but her passion for this, this trade, this profession serves this community really well.
I would agree with Sean's comments. Having been part of the group that initially did some of the final interviews and hired Maria. Good. A huge asset to making all of our jobs better. Maybe not easier, but get us to do our job better. So very comfortable with where we are.
Is there a motion effective November 22nd, 2021 to accept the town manager's performance review summary and further increase the town manager's salary by 2.35%, which is $169,760 retroactive to July 1, 2021? Second.
Just a quick comment that I guess one of the benefits of not being in the community is stay on the annual thing. Now, the United States folks, which are some of the, we look towards it fairly open bargaining with those folks. But again, there is a difference in salary process as a result of either me, you know, how.
Aye.
Okay, that's Maria. Thank you.
I won't look at her. That's not nice. No, it's like, that's not a best.
Correct. Yes. The performance review. Sorry, I have to tell you. When you worked in the real people set, nice things you should probably watch.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, very thank you. The, my, my, the personnel subcommittee spent a couple of meetings talking about all of our work conditions and everything. And I want to commend staff for the time that they took documenting all of the work conditions we have and categorizing them in terms of their, here by ordinance, or here by charter, or as we formed them. And the motions that you're looking at in the packet are the recommendations of the personnel subcommittee. And I thought we could, you know, take, take it section by section because they're a long difference. The first is the the fair rent condition. And I just wanted to tee it up. I was asking Maria, I know you were, your team did some digging into the history of this condition. We learned that they have not been that for about 30 years.
30 years.
30 years. And talking about what they're charged with, and ultimately, how does that need being met today?
Sure, sure. So we did, as Eric said, a little bit of research on this group. We honestly were not able to really ascertain the origin of how this ordinance seemed to be. We do think there's, again, just a very, it's a possibility it may have created some of our current, the housing laws and legislation that exists. As Eric said, that fair rent commission has not yet been included to member. But at the same time, there are a series of fair housing regulations now, both federal and state that do apply to what the municipality. Our social services director, Justin Formanak, is designated as our fair housing officer. And so essentially, our fair housing officer is a local point of contact for any individual that believes they have experienced discrimination during their housing process, or their housing experience. We at the local level often serve really as the fair housing officer as really a referral entity. There are several very good organizations here in Connecticut, including the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, that really do work with individuals that believe they've experienced discrimination in their housing experience. So we're really here to help test people to either get resources and to help them get those situations resolved. So again, it's a punch. We don't have any documentation to say that, you know, with certainty that sort of that commission is obligated or are used to their housing services. But at this meantime, we just really couldn't find or, or commission under the words that does it.
I believe, recall that this originally came in with some very built Eno farms. And the town was actually a minister of the rent. I believe this was go-to mission. If someone felt that they were being charged rent inappropriately. It was a number of years ago, so I might be a little fuzzy.
Thank you, Paul.
We need a town story. We have to be a little bit more modest.
I think we need to look at this. I was gonna do the same. I should have promised you.
Okay. Are there any other questions on this item? Their motion effective November 22nd, 2021 to sound public hearing to receive public comment concerning the repeal of chapter 52 of the synergy of the ordinances of fair rent commission for 6:00 PM on December 20, 2020. I second it. And very much have to go through this process because it's an ordinance.
Yes.
We need to fill the ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I think the next group is one of the more challenging to discuss because they're current committees that are current members. But as we evaluate the needs of the town and our form of government, and looking back at why these committees were formed, and realizing that needs have changed, Personnel Subcommittee recommended sunsetting these three committees. I personally met with the tourism committee and explained the recommendation. Insurance committee hasn't met in four years since the change of government. That's an expertise that staff adds with professional management. I wanted to see if there were any questions.
I have a question on the recycling. I don't know if Mary Turner is still here. I can't see the podium. Mary. So I, I see there the value of the recycling committee and the swap shop. You had related that. If, if this committee were to go away, does that mean the swap shop would be gone? Would, I guess what I'm asking, would someone run that regardless of the committee as a, as a side?
You have to have the town's support. Okay. And with that support, that means the committee is part of the management of the swap shop. As well as we just recruited the Lions Club. Okay. Where we received seven of your members who have joined us in managing it. I think it's a significant part of what the recycling committee is all about. But also that we were able to do the food scrap program. You know, I would say within the last six months, we were able to have over 2,000 pounds of food scrap that would have gone into a compressor is now being delivered to the farm to be distributed among the animals. That's our second big program. We had others in the past and we're still working on those. But the recycling committee is, is a hands-on group that manages this swap shop. And this swap shop came about all because I brought it to the, to the board selection when we were looking for a location. And the Eno will was always designated that that piece of property was for the poor. And what better way than to have some kind of a unit where we can freely distribute on items that are still very useful instead of going into the waste stream, offering it to residents who, ever that it may be very privileged or underprivileged, but for free.
So what I was, I was gonna suggest that we would not sunset the recycling committee at this point in time. Take it out because we have talked to tourism and insurance and the tourism committee, the people that I spoke to feel that, that they, they don't need to exist. I asked Chris on the insurance head of representation, and I talked to somebody else on insurance, I said, you? And they didn't seem to have a problem with sunsetting those committees. But if we could potentially hold up on the recycling committee to see the value, continue to see the value of what they do, and potentially more value given what's happening with Mira and the future of recycling, that would sweep them in existence for now.
Yes, I just, I'm gonna think Fred, I thought the, I thought the intent was to thin the, the uninhabited, unattended shells of these organs. Okay, so that's clearly the fair for housing insurance, which I was part of, and I can, I can build strongly to disband it and, and serve the purpose of the rabbit now. But I did not intend under recycling was that, was to, I thought it was to incorporate the activity. So we've got three organizations, two organizations that are to disband them because there's no activities there or no need for it. But that, that organization which is active and is, and is being supported and is providing a service. So I'd be in favor of unbundling the recycling from. So I'd be in favor of unbundling the recycling from this current activity, but also looking at putting the activities, the management of it someplace else rather than having it be its own.
That was your recommendation, the three of us approved of personnel was that recycling wouldn't be disbanded and thrown away. It would be consolidated under clean energy and sustainability for it. And it would essentially be a subcommittee of versus, I mean, I've looked back at the minutes, I think the recycling subcommittee has met for a whole about forty-five minutes this year. So in at least three or four meetings and I get not debating the need, I think the swap shack is phenomenal and I want that to continue. And I thought we were supporting the swap shack and those activities continuing under the clean energy task force. And this would carry forward as a subcommittee versus.
I just want to say that because I feel as if the tone or understanding is that these services and activities and volunteers could be lost. And I think it's just bringing a part of another group to encourage potential sharing of ideas and management occurs there. And I would certainly ask anyone who's on those like, if we move forward with that type of realignment, if you identify that there's actual a drop in the experience, the services are cutting or a tone or an intention or the lack of support, then bring it back to the board. We'll address it and realign recycling three or redefine recycling. That would be my plan.
Yeah, we are not, there's no attempt to disband the activity. So it's to consolidate, as we talked about.
Well, I know, and I was part of it personnel, but now I've looked into it a little bit and hearing what Mary is saying here. And I also don't see it under, you know, we're moving sustainability to consolidate with clean energy, but we don't mention, unless I'm keeping it. We don't mention recycling in there to consolidate. So it's basically gone from there. So if the future need is to move it under clean energy, then that would be a separate discussion. It's not written here to say that.
May I take a moment? Sorry. What you're doing, if you umbrella it under one or two more organizations, what you do is you're diminishing their importance. I will tell you, we didn't get the enough of that numbers that I had collected. But we had one thousand three hundred and eleven I donated, I mean adopted from our swap shop. That is not a small number, right? We had one thousand one hundred and six individual visitors that came to the swap shop. This season long. And it's only opened from April through October. And again, it was approximately twenty-seven Saturdays, accomplished all this. And we had from our committee, which we only had five active committee members that managed that center. And with the Alliance Club, which one of our members had helped to recruit, these are three volunteers giving up their time and effort. We had to train them to get, have them go forward. And they were very excited about their contribution. And then we had two other community volunteers. Saying all of that, we had originally on our budget, in our line item, that we had collected in the past, a total of three hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. This year alone, we collected, this is a donation box, by the way. Many people just appreciate, even though it's all free, appreciate our efforts and they will put money into the spots. They donated eighty-two dollars and thirty cents. Okay? All that money, we draw from that to pay for the disposables of items that are not adoptable for whatever reason. So we have to do a cleanup, so we have to pay for that and other repairs. That was eighty-two dollars, I mean, I'm sorry, expensive was fifty-nine dollars even. The total in our account right now is four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. That's significant when it comes from the residents that appreciate what we're doing. I feel that if we are put into a group as an umbrella and grouped in and not separated out, so we could stand out and continue to get the support of the residents and hopefully of the board, then our credibility will be diminished. The accountability will be diminished. That's my concern. When you have to draw an agenda on a monthly basis and then also report the minutes of that meeting. Yes, the meetings are short and brief and to the point. When I run a meeting, I get it done and it's over. I make sure.
I disagree, Mary, but it's town staff time. We can't always afford to allocate.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you over this.
I, I should have been in charge. Did you go ahead and finish?
Go right ahead. No.
Mister Chairman.
So I'm just saying how I feel about this. I feel very strongly, again.
I, I, I'm so, first of all, thank all your words. I thank you for your clarifying facts, but I'm missing those. And I, this is not a, this is not a challenge whatsoever to the, to the, to the stated fact, to the value of the mission, which I think is incredible. I've got something in the back of my car right now and I wish it was open. I could bring you down there. You remind me of this. The, but I, 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 but I hope that you hear, at least my, my intent is to do nothing other than to continue on those good efforts and make sure that those good efforts go forward. So if we do bring you in and reward elaborative, I think of the word sustainability, sustainability is a component of, it's in, it's in the same house, it lives in the same house as recycling does. And I would hope that those good efforts go forward, unchallenged and better and continue. There's no, no discussions around, I don't see how this would ever even impact the closing of it for something, the swap shop as your point. Now, and as soon as, I would ask you, as I said, as soon as you saw or felt as if your voice or the group's voice was not on equal footing or far with that, the organization that were asking you to enter into for an efficiency standpoint, then bring it to us and we would gladly address it. The last thing we're looking to do here is to diminish or to remove any of the momentum that you guys have accomplished. And I would, and thank you for highlighting the donations. I didn't know that. That's another thing that. I think we're moving forward with this. This is, this to me is an example of just how we started on the mission. I serve, this is the only service that I charge. This is kind of gives to me the vision, the journey we started on, you know, six years ago or more, redefining involving town government. It's a continued evolution and improvement of services and experience. I think this just goes with it. And like anything else, it's pliable, flexible. If they make the wrong move, we'll change it on their behalf. Like that, that's my.
Also, we did be into the sustainability program, which I was a member of. But saying all of that, they distributed an award. We're not looking for an award. We're looking to exist fully in the capacity we are in now. I'm not looking to diminish our capacity. All right? So clean energy task force, we've had members in the past that served on both. Right? When you talk about streamlining and trying to, you know, condense everything, I don't know what, what more our committee can do that can be any more streamlined. We do our agenda and our minutes and they're distributed to the public works director. We're directly under him. And so I never had any hiccups in the exchange of information. It was in and out, done. That's all I have to say. I will just express that I really am opposed to this.
So I was going to, I just looked at some of the meeting minutes and there's noticed, most of the agendas don't include staff. So I'm not sure that there's that much staff extended other than when I talk. I would like to amend the motion as the term is correct, to move effective November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one to sunset the tourism committee and insurance committee. I'll move that.
I will, I'll second that.
No, I moved that. You can second it.
You made a motion, I think.
Can I second it then?
Sure.
Okay.
Jackie made the motion.
I just read the amendment.
Any further discussion?
I'm just confused as to why we debated this personnel for six, yeah, what are we getting now? Now you want to change what we recommend?
Because I, I've heard different facts and I forgot it.
Well, what's the, what the, then I would ask, what is the?
Well, I thought we had talked to all these committees and got by and from that, that they were being dismantled.
No, we talked about that.
Okay.
What's the, what's the end goal here?
The end goal is the recycling committee remains for now.
With the, with the intention to review it deeper, to get a better understanding, to interview, what?
Right now, I'm, I'm, I moved to just leave the recycling committee in existence.
Okay, well, I it's difficult for me when you have the, on my position, I'm at the recycle, this, this is process for me. So you got, you convened a group of experts, like, you know, best, best practice hopefuls, let's say, and you came forward with a, with an informed recommendation. And I don't think that new information has come to light. So that's, that's my thought. Moving against your own work, that's, that's.
It's not new information, it's a clear understanding.
Right, order. I made a order.
So probably continue.
It's kind of a recommendation that might help with pre-coup engagement, so we can do some things. So, you know, we do have the motion a little bit further in the packet, which very clearly states that the sustainability team will be involved in the energy, become a subcommittee of that task force. There was this similar conversation at personal class, if you write that recycling would be converted that larger sustainability. So that motion could be created to make that more clear about that, you know, that recycling would be part of that. So I think that if we wanted to take that forward, so that last motion, I think it would be helpful to be more clear on that and specifically the topic, this might be one situation to get your members on.
I appreciate that. That's exactly the direction I'm going in. And, and or have that, have, I may table, I may be to table this to an additional, at some point in the future, where we could have a presentation from that group, almost identifying and acknowledging and welcoming and, and talking about how we would absorb them to a certain extent and to improve their contributions and to highlight them and then, and then actually maybe elevate that. But moving, you know, I have a problem with us identifying that as a, as a group, that the committee could be better served in the capacity. And nothing tonight told me that we should, there's a version.
Well, would we be, it's actually voting to sunset the recycling committee, but then we would change the motion for clean energy to recycle under.
So just, just take the motion as it announced and then probably the motions afterwards, maybe it's not everybody. The motion is appropriate that when you made it for tourism, insurance, right? We have to do that anyway, so let's do it.
Let's move and second.
Second, does any other discussion on those two? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries.
So I'll move effective November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as per the discussion from personnel, that we sunset the recycling committee and then merge that as a subcommittee with an additional motion tonight, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, for the sustainability team to consolidate with the energy task force and to become a subcommittee of that task force. Within that, the recycling committee should become a subcommittee of that task force as well. And should these bodies have an interest in participating with the sustainable city initiative, calling it to see maybe point access issue members, sustainable sustainability, clean energy, for bed, cultural protection, rec, economic development, permission of planet, and essential capture. Yes. So we are, my recommendation, the motion on that at the hand is to dissolve the recycling committee's stance today and reconstitute it as a subcommittee of clean energy as we have discussed. So to be very clear, we are not doing away with any of the activities. We are changing where this is. Effective, enjoy and appreciate all the service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion back to one.
One more motion, effective November twenty-second, to sunset the E D C worker, short-term rental owners worker, and review one of the processes of unaffiliated work.
I'll move.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, there was one more. First, twenty twenty-two, to sunset the three fifteen of our steering committee.
I'll move.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appointments and resignations, is there a motion effective November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one to accept the resignation of Janet Isley as a regular member of the Sinbry Spirit Council, retroactive to October fourth, twenty twenty-one? I'll move that. Their motion effective November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one to accept the resignation of Phil Percy Yellow as a regular member of the clean energy task force and the insurance committee, retroactive to October fifth, twenty twenty-one? What time is it? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, one more.
Is there a motion, retroactive to September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, to accept the motion effective January eighth, as an alternate member of the society? With that.
Aye.
Aye.
They will be back on the minutes from our regular November eight. You will be on. We have the special.
Even better.
Yes. I just wanted to take a minute and thank everybody, the current board and the task force I've got to work with. I have met some incredible people. Did not always have agreement, reunion, or disagreement, but we had great discussion. Pretty much every time I walk away, smarter or more learning, a problem. And I have been fortunate and blessed in all honesty to have met a number of great employees of the town. I knew some for my years of being in town, but we brought some great people aboard and I've been very fortunate. Eric, I never realized how much I would like you after you moved to reverse. But I very much enjoyed getting to know you. You know, my dad said, I found that bag was only eighteen inches from something else and he was right. But I really had enjoyed working with you and you've done a great job. And there was never any doubt in any of our discussions that you're, are listening, trying to do what was best for Sinbry. To me, that is what this board has been about and should be about, even when we disagree. It should be about all of our perceptions about what's best for Sinbry. Wendy, I barely got to know you. And then COVID hit and I became the Zoom test tube dummy. Because I was the first person to test Zoom out and look how far we've come now. But you're, you're, you're going to be fine as first selection. Just rely on your rest of your work to go and listen to them and sometimes you're going to disagree and that's great. But. and listen to them and sometimes you're gonna disagree and that's great, but you will get a better product by my company. And I know you listened because we would maybe not pass notes back and forth, but we share stuff as we both try to figure stuff out. So you're gonna be fine. Jackie, I've worked with you the last couple of years in front of my fun. And I'm sure you're going to come back much like the phoenix in some other fashion. But, but I, I wish you nothing but the best in working with. Chris, our families have known each other for years. And it has been good getting to know you again. Much like everybody else to take it all out of person and that's a good thing. And we just had a great example of different perspectives and discussions and everything else. And I, well, someday I want to swing golf with as long as I have to get really long golf posts to get in that. Maria, you, what I envisioned a town managership. So impressed with your career and your and your book and your organization. And I said, oh my God, I thought I was bad. This lady did so good. But you have brought your expertise here, you shared it willingly. Admin us a better board. And thank you. And Melissa, I'm the daughter there. The kid's okay. She, she has brought a fun balance and I'm sure hopefully you're going to go far. She's not too far in front of the office you're at now, but I, I appreciate that. Sean, they'll leave the family forever and wish you nothing but the best. It has been fun being on the board with you. And sometimes you pat me on the back and sometimes you're not, but that's okay. Sometimes we all need that. But I, I wish you guys nothing but the best. And if you get to the key, you know, like it's about twelve feet of all of those seats and I'll come back and relax and conversation. But I thank you for your time, for your friendship and wish you guys the best. And with that, I will make a motion.
I'd like to move that motion. I would second it?
You would second it.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any further comments, Dave? All in there.
Aye. Thank you, guys.